Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everybody to Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. Today is March 13th, 2023, and I want to welcome everybody in the audience here. We have a full chamber, and hopefully, we've got plenty of people watching at home because we have some very special guests here this evening. First, I would like to make a public safety announcement. In the case of an emergency, we ask everybody to remain calm. We would go out this door here. You would take a right, and you would go down the stairs. If that area is blocked, we would take a left, go all the way around, and down the stairs. In the case of an emergency, please do not use the elevator. At this time, I'd like to, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Right. They know it. They know it. That's good. All right. Right now, I would like to invite up Bishop J. Anthony Dickerson, who's from Great, Greater Mount Olive Full Gospel Baptist Church, and he's going to give us our invocation this evening. Bishop, the floor is yours.
Shall we bow our heads in prayer? Dear, wise, and loving Father, we first want to say thank you on behalf of those who gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings, and thank you for life itself, and thank you for health. And Father, in Scripture, you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities. You have established those very authorities to promote peace and justice. And Father, we ask your blessings upon our mayor, the various levels of city leaders, and in particular, for this assembly. And I'm asking you to grant them the wisdom to govern and to amend conflicting issues and interests of our times. And Father, I pray your blessings upon the agenda set before them today. Please give them the assurance of what would be pleasing and done in your sight. And Lord, let everything be done in decency and order. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, for all the things you have done for us. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mayor Heath has some proclamation and some certificates to hand out this evening. Mayor Heath?
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. We may be here a while, but at this time, I'd like to ask April to come up and join I have a proclamation I wish to read before we get into the certificates. So let me, let me go and do that. Whereas born in 1974 as the son of April Lightfoot and the late James DeShiel, Shaun Christopher Lightfoot's love of football could not be measured as he played for years for the Salvation Army Terps and was named as one of the best running backs in their history. And whereas Shaun was able to play with some of the best in the business, as he and his teammates won All-Star competition against future NFL stars, Ronde and Tiki Barber in Roanoke, Virginia, paving the way for him to play running back throughout his high school years at James M. Bennett. And whereas Shaun's dedication to football led him to pass on his passion for the sport, he decided to join the Yellow Jackets coaching staff at the Salvation Army over 20 years ago, which led to coaching Salvation Army Terps and also basketball in Kappa League, before deciding to take a break that did not last long. And whereas in 2012, Shaun hosted the Rising Stars Free Football Camp that led him back to coaching at the Salvation Army, where he earned a record score of 43 wins and three losses in football, and 47 wins and five losses in basketball. And whereas in 2019, Shaun and his wife founded Salisbury Elite, a nonprofit youth football and cheer league that has become part of the Delmarva American Youth Football League. And while in the league, Salisbury Elite has been able to win five conference championships and advance to five regional competitions. And whereas making history in 2019, he coached the 12-and-under All-Star team to a third-place victory in the Delmarva AVF League and was the first coach to bring home a trophy for that league. Now therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim March 13th, 2023, as Shaun Lightfoot Day in the city of, in celebration for many years ---------------------------------------------------------------------------------------- Coach, if you'd stay up here with me, I'm going to ask you and April to help me with this, because we have a lot of reading to do. So we have some certificates for all the players. I'll tell you what, you pick that out. Hold that. Yeah. Well, I think we should recognize them anyway. Yeah. So we have a, why don't you announce the young men's names? This is the 12-and-under that won third place in the Nationals.
Yes. None of these young men are here, but they, they did a heck of a job. Shafi Wayne, Landon Blumenthal, Dalton Washington, Christian Burnell Jr., James Morton III, Devon Thomas, and Zaire White. Yes, sir. For this, sir.
Okay. For the, we okay on these? Okay. I'm going to, this is the 2019 Salisbury Elite All-Star Participants, Kissimmee, Florida Football Competition, 14-and-under. Why don't you announce their names?
Yes, sir. Malakai Donaldson.
We are going to get a picture of all of us up there after we finish this, so get your cameras ready. Go ahead.
Makai Jenkins.
Congratulations. Congratulations. This now is the, he's not here.
He's not here, but Cameron Dozier.
This is the list of the 2022 Regional Participants, competed in North Carolina in November 2022. In order to advance, the original of these boys won the Delmarva SYF Championships.
Rufus Brayboy III, Julian Byrd, Isaiah Clark.
Yep. Oh, there's two.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Trey Juan Cotton, Trader Jr. Mason Trippon.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
April scared them.
Jayce Yante Charles, Jaheer the Police, Gavin McIntyre.
Congratulations. 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 April scared them.
Kaden Morton, Aiden Saubray, Nazair Thomas, Kaden Gaskins.
He's here, sir. He's here. He's here.
We got, we got one. No, 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 no. No. Uh-oh. Aiden Saubray, Nazair Thomas, Aiden Gaskins, Savory Wallace, Aiden Westack, Thomas Will III.
There you go. There you go. The next group is 2022 Regional Participants, competed in the same, same tournament, and this is the 11-and-under.
Justin Arias, Kaden Bratton, Keonte Bratton Jr., Devin Brown Jr., Jonathan Byrd, Davion Cannon, Keith Clark Jr.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Kaden Morton, Aiden Saubray, Nazair Thomas, Kaden Gaskins. He's here, sir. He's here. He's here.
We got, we got one.
No, 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 no. No.
Uh-oh.
Aiden Saubray, Nazair Thomas, Aiden Gaskins, Savory Wallace, Aiden Westack, Thomas Will III.
There you go. There you go.
How cute.
The next group is 2022 Regional Participants, competed in the same, same tournament, and this is the 11-and-under.
Justin Arias, Kaden Bratton, Keonte Bratton Jr., Devin Brown Jr., Jonathan Byrd, Davion Cannon, Keith Clark Jr.
Congratulations.
Good job. Zaire Franklin, Matthew Braden, Ryan Braden, Zaire Hardy.
He's here.
Good job. Braxton Hastings, Braylon Jones, Jacob Lang.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Keep up the work.
I would like to face him across the line. Don't think so.
Mason McIntyre.
All right. These boys are tough.
Good job.
Reef chalk.
J. Cole Moore.
I didn't know any boys that would ever look like that. None. Muscles, muscles.
Jocelyn Sterling, Jaden Thompson, Jamez Thompson, Jason Trader. Dylan Villa, Xavier Waters, Amara Westack.
The last group is the same tournament, 13-and-under Participants.
Good job. Garcia Bowen. Christian Brown, Shamir Cole, Jay Sean Dorman, Armon Floyd Satchel, Jakari Harmon, Dana McCready, Kristen Millen.
I got a little worried there. I'm like, whoa.
How would you like to run up on the line? We got the jersey.
I got a little nervous. I'm hoping to see a birth certificate on that one.
Yeah. Birth certificate.
Any NFL scouts in the crowd?
Me, Paul Barrow, Mazai Peters, Raven Richardson, Samaj Jay Roll.
You're making me cry.
One percent. Matthew Stanley Ross, Logan Swift, Kayvon Wallace, Wyatt Wells, Marcus White Jr., and Zaire White.
Let's, let's have a great round of applause to these young men. Now, we're going to try this. We're going to walk up behind, oh, yeah. We're going to, but we're going to do it in an orderly fashion. We'll spread out, and then we'll take some pictures. Coach, floor is yours.
Just first of all, I would like to thank the mayor, the council. Really appreciate you guys recognizing my organization, my young men. Great bunch of young men. Love them all. You know, I love the city of Salisbury. That's why we're Salisbury Elite, and you know, we, we thank you guys for your support. Thank you.
Okay. We, everybody, all the players, come on up.
Yeah, coaches, everyone.
Little ones up front with April.
We have more hills than honey. Look, look. He's going to play college ball. Let's meet down. Come on down. Come on.
Keep coming.
Come on down. Come on.
You guys can slide on to the other side, too.
You got to get, you got to get. You got to sure. Where you going? Get dropped.
Keep sliding down.
I told you. Ew. Bro, because why do they got that? I'm kidding.
Everybody.
Make sure you hold your certificates.
Excellent job.
Yeah, your certificates. Come on back, just a little bit. Step on back so you can hide our stomachs.
There you go. Lock it, lock it.
All right, everybody, look at, right at the clock in the back. Up on the wall.
There you go. Yeah, there you go.
Look at the clock.
That way you can get, everyone can get to your things.
Salisbury Elite!
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Great job. This is pretty great.
I told you. It's a trust fund.
I'm guessing a lot of NFL, a lot of NFL. Hey, you, you, you trying to make it out?
Jesus.
Okay.
Congratulations, guys.
Is there video footage of that?
Hey, that's my money right here.
You know, it's, it's really great when we can actually see the village.
Yeah.
Yep.
Shaun and the coaches and the parents, we thank you so, so very much for what you do. The time, because I can tell you, this is time-consuming. It takes a lot. It takes a lot of patience, a lot of courage, a lot of tolerance. You have to have the patience of Joe to deal with children. And really, for real, the children aren't quite as bad as the parents can be at times. And I, and I'm a parent, so I can say that. But Shaun and the, and the coaches, we thank you a million times over. If there's anything I can do to help you, please let me know. Please let me know. I appreciate everything. I, I can remember my dad doing this exact same thing and coaching football and basketball and having a love and a passion for kids. And you have to have that to deal with kids. You have to have that kind of passion for kids. I thank you so much. Please take care of our babies, so our babies can take care of their babies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I guess we're going to have a city council meeting tonight? Is that?
Yeah, no, I think we did good.
All right, we got a couple of things to do on the agenda tonight. So at this time, I'm going to call for a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Good evening. On the consent agenda, we have February 6, 2023, closed session, work session, and special meeting minutes, the February 13th, 2023 council meeting and closed session minutes. Resolution number 3232, approving the appointment of Latonya Christopher to the Truth Committee for term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3233, approving the appointment of Dr. Samuel Henry III to the Truth Committee for term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3234, approving the appointment of Maya Horsey to the Board of Appeals for term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3235, approving the reappointment of Karen Lutz to the Zoo Commission for term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3236, approving the appointment of Demetria Marshall to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending March 2025. Resolution number 3237, approving the reappointment of Sharon Murphy to the Friends of Poplar Hill Board of Directors for term ending March 2026. Resolution number 3238, approving the reappointment of Donald Pulver to the Zoo Commission for term ending March 2026. And resolution number 3239, approving the appointment of Kat Savoy to the Truth Committee for term ending March 2026.
Questions or comments about the consent agenda?
None.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, I would like to ask the following individuals, if you are here, please stand up. And if you're online, raise your hand. Latonya Christopher, Dr. Samuel Henry III, Maya Horsey, Karen Lutz, Demetria Marshall, Sharon Murphy, Donald Pulver, Kat Savoy. All right, we just want to give you a round of applause and thank you for serving. If anybody is interested in serving on a committee or a commission, please go to the city website, to the mayor's office, and there's a section there you can select on to look at what positions are available, and, and you can apply there by submitting a resume. Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to approve resolution number 3199.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Kitsero.
Sure, real quick. So for those who have not been here before, I know you probably don't want to listen to me do an entire annexation resolution. You are more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting or leave whenever you want to. So feel free to hang out as long as you want to, or this can be when everybody goes. I don't want to make it awkward.
Oh, man, that was a fan. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Be good.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Andy, we had him reeled in. We didn't want to hear that.
We don't want to hear this. Have a good night, guys.
And we had him mesmerized.
I don't want them to listen to me read the annexation.
You took the spell off.
You know what it is? Andy didn't want him to hear him read.
Thank you all.
Because he's nervous with so many people. That's what it was. This is an annexation.
Have a good night.
He's a good man.
Yes, he is.
My wife is going out to take a picture of her students, some of her students.
Oh. That's lovely.
Awesome.
I love it. That's our six councilwoman.
Have a good night, everyone.
There it is. Or deputy mayor. Deputy mayor.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
She's deputy mayor now.
Deputy.
All right. Ms. Kitsero.
A little thinner crowd now.
No, sir, you can't.
You can't speak?
Not yet.
At the end, at the end of the meeting, you can.
At the end, you can. They all have public comments.
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yep, no problem.
No problem.
We'd love you to hang around, yeah.
Yep.
Unless you want to read this for me.
All right, this is resolution number 3199, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Hold on one second. Resolution, this Council of the City of Salisbury proposes an annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as John Deere Drive Salisbury 50 Annexation LLC. Annexation beginning at a point at the corner of easterly existing corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, at its intersection with the southwest side of John Deere Drive, continuing south along the existing corporate limits line, a distance of 911.37 feet, thence continuing around the southeasterly perimeter of the affected property to a point at the intersection with the southern existing corporate city limits line along John Deere Drive and the northeast corner of parcel 739, thence west along the existing corporate city limits line to the point of the beginning, being all the real property identified as map 0039, grid 0011, parcel 0739, consisting of 16.62 acres of land, more or less. Whereas the City of Salisbury has received a petition for annexation dated June 17, 2021, attached hereto as Exhibit 1, incorporated by reference as it fully set forth herein, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters, of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed evaluations of the real property in the area sought to be, and expinding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as John Deere Drive Salisbury 50 Annexation LLC. Annexation beginning at a point at this corner of the easterly existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, at its intersection with the southwest side of John Deere Drive, continuing south along the existing corporate limits line at a distance of 911.37 feet, thence continuing around the southeasterly perimeter of the affected property to a point at this intersection with the southern existing corporate limits line along John Deere Drive and the northeast corner of parcel 739, thence west along the existing corporate city limits line to the point of the beginning, being all the real property identified as prop map 0039, grid 0011, parcel 0739, consisting of 16.62 acres of land, more or less, and therefore being the same real property, more particularly described in the property description attached hereto as Exhibit 2, and incorporating as a fourth set in herein, and being the same public rights of way, more particularly depicted on that certain plat entitled Annexation Plat, attached hereto as Exhibit 3, and incorporated as a fully set forth herein, as for said real property herein after referred to as the property. And whereas the City of Salisbury has cause to be made a certification of the signature on the said petition for annexation, the City of Salisbury has verified that the person signing the petition represent at least 25% of the person who are eligible voters and owner, and property owners, owing 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property in the area to be annexed all of as of August 30, 2021, set forth in the certification by Leslie C. Shero, surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached hereto as Exhibit 4, and incorporated by reference as it's fully set forth herein. And whereas it appears that the, for said petition for annexation dated June 17, 2021, meets all the requirements of the applicable state and local law, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Code of Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution providing for the City of Salisbury annexation of the property, a set forth here in, so be and hereby scheduled for March 13, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1-- Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that the municipal boundary of the City of Salisbury be changed so as to annex to and include within the said municipal boundaries of the City of Salisbury all the certain real property, more particularly described in Exhibits 2 and 3, attached hereto and incorporated by reference as a fully set forth herein. Section 2, the annexation of the property be and hereby is approved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, subject to all terms, conditions, and agreements contained in the aforementioned property description, the proposed annexation agreement and annexation plan attached as Exhibits 2, 5, and 6 respectively, each of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein as if all such terms, conditions, and agreements contained in such exhibits are specifically set forth at length in this resolution. Section 3, the zoning map of the City of Salisbury shall be amended to include the property within that certain zoning district of the City of Salisbury identified as mixed use nonresidential, with said real property newly annexed into the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, as contemplated by this resolution's presented zoned LB-1, like business and institutional, in accordance with existing zoning laws of Wycomoco County, Maryland. Section 4, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on this resolution on March 13, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the City Council Office Building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of the time and place of said public hearing to be published not fewer than two times and not less than weekly intervals, and at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, with said public notice shall specify a time and a place at which the Council in the City of Salisbury will the hold the aforementioned public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified herein above. And be it further resolved by the City Council, sorry, the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 5, it is the intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all provisions herein. Section 6, it is further the intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise enforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law. Each adjudication shall apply only to this section, paragraph, and subsection clause or revision, so judged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 7, this recital set forth herein here above are incorporated in this section of the resolution as if such recitals are such speci- specially, excuse me, specifically set forth at length in this section 7. Section 8, this resolution and the annexation of the property as contemplated herein shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passes, subject, however, to write a referendum with respect to this resolution as set forth in Maryland Code Local Government 4-401. Would you like me to do that again?
Yes, yes, please. You just speak up louder next time.
At this time, if there's anybody that's interested in testifying on the public hearing and wishes to speak, please stand and be sworn in by our city clerk, Kim Nichols. Seeing nobody, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And once again, if anybody wishes to speak, please stand and our city clerk will swear you in so that you can speak.
Or you want to speak on this issue?
No.
Oh, okay.
Seeing that nobody wishes to speak on this issue, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll call the question. All those in favor of resolution number 3199, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then the chair votes aye. Two more of these. At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve resolution number 3200, proposing the annexation plan for the John Deere Drive Salisbury 50, annex LLC, annexation.
So move.
Second.
Let's give that one to Megan.
Which one? The second?
Mr. Kitsrow? Take a deep breath.
Deep breath. Got some water?
Resolution number 3200, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as John Deere Drive Salisbury 50, annexation LLC, annexation, beginning at a point at the corner of easterly existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, at its intersection with the southwest side of John Deere Drive, continuing south along the existing corporate limits line, a distance of 911.37 feet, thence continuing around the southeasterly perimeter of that affected property to a point at the intersection with the southern existing corporate city limits line along John Deere Drive and the northeast corner of parcel 739, thence westerly along the existing corporate city limits line to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as map 0039, grid 0011, parcel 0739, consisting of 16.62 acres of land, more or less. Whereas pursuant to the to the certain petition for annexation dated June 17, 2021, attached hereto as Exhibit 1, incorporated by the reference as it fully set forth herein, the City of Salisbury proposes the annexation of the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits and the City of Salisbury to be known as John Deere Drive Salisbury 50, annex LLC, annexation, beginning at the point at the corner of the easterly existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, at its intersection with the southwest side of John Deere Drive, continuing south along the existing corporate limits line at distance 911, excuse me, 911.37 feet, thence continuing around the southeasterly perimeter of the affected property to a point at the intersection with the southern existing corporate city limits line along John Deere Drive and the northeast corner of the parcel 739, thence west along the existing corporate city limits line to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as map 0039, grid 0011, parcel 0739, consisting of 16.62 acres of land, more or less, and further being the same real property, more particularly described in the property description attached here too as Exhibit 2, incorporated as it fully set forth herein, being the public right of way, more particularly depicted on that certain plat entitled "Annexation Plat," attached here to Exhibit 3, and incorporated as it fully set forth herein. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 41415, the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of the property. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4040, excuse me, 406, a public hearing on this resolution provided for the Council of the City of Salisbury approval of the annexation plan for the City of the Salisbury's annexation of the property as set forth herein, so being hereby scheduled for March 13, 2023, at 6:00. Therefore, it be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, the annexation plan for John Deere Drive Salisbury 50, annex LLC, annexation to the City of Salisbury, attached here too, as Exhibit 4, and incorporated as it fully set forth here, and be and hereby is adopted by the City of Salisbury, annexation of the property as contemplated by this resolution. Section 2, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on this resolution on March 13, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers, the City Council Office Building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published not fewer than two times at not at least week, excuse me, not less than weekly intervals, and at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, with said by public notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council in the City of Salisbury will the hold the af- aforementioned public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of the publication as specified herein above. And be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 3, it is the intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, it be further intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that in any section, paragraph, subsection clause of provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unforeseeable other under applicable Maryland or federal law. Each adjudication shall apply only to the sections, paragraph, subsection clause or revision, as so judged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recital set forth here and above are incorporated in this section of this resolution, as it sets recitals are specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this resolution and annexation of the property are contemplated herein, shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passes, subject to the right of referendum with respect to this resolution as set forth in the Maryland Code Local Government 4-401. Finished.
At this time, if there's anybody who wishes to speak in the public hearing on this issue, please stand so that our city clerk, Kim Nichols, can swear you in. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Once again, if anybody wishes to speak, please rise so that our city clerk can swear you in. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3200, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. And so the announcement that we'll make is this annexation will become effective on April 28, 2023. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2778 for second reading. This is rezoning 401 and 409 Snow Hill Road.
Mr. Holland?
So move.
Oh, Bill, hold on a second. Don't go anywhere.
So move.
Just, we have one question. Let's just sit for one second till we do this.
So move.
Second.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm actually here in place of Ms. Boucher. She's taking a much-needed vacation and she's lined me up for this, so I think I'm prepared to lose my voice tonight. So I think I have it worse than Andy did. But this is ordinance number 2278, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to rezone two properties located at 401 Snow Hill Road and 409 Snow Hill Road from R10 residential to general commercial. This is before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
If there's anyone who wishes to speak in this public hearing, please stand so that our city clerk, Kim Nichols, can swear you in. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Once again, if anybody wishes to speak, please rise so that Ms. Nichols can swear you in. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. At this time, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of ordinance number 2778, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. And this ordinance will take effect on March 23, 2023. Mr. Mayor, I know you like a...
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to recognize a person who's going to be retiring tonight, and it's Mr. Bill Holland. This is his last meeting.
Wow.
He's the BPI manager, and we see him every time there's an annexation. And Bill, on behalf of the entire team, I want to thank you for your service and wish you the best in your retirement and hope you're better at it than I was. It's great. And please, please feel free to come back and see us, and please do. So thank you for your service again.
Especially when we have annexations and public hearings.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And he rides off into the sunset. He's got a brand-new passport. He's excited.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2780 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
All right, ordinance number 2780, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment to the city's special revenue fund budget and to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Bless Our Children campaign for the Santa's Workshop program. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2780 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2781 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2781, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore in the amount of $7,500 for the Summer Youth Employment Program. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
None.
I would like to add that since we've implemented this, this has been a great program in partnership with Junior Achievement over the years, and glad to see we're continuing to get assistance with this program. So all those in favor of approving ordinance number 2781 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2782 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2782, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept additional City Salisbury Fiscal Year 2023 Homelessness Solutions Program funding in the amount of $9,574, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the homeless services case specialist position. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments about this ordinance?
No.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2782, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2783 for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2783, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to set billboard license fee for the fiscal year 2023 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget of the City of Salisbury. And whereas ordinance 2723 set fees for fiscal year 2023. And whereas the City Department of Finance recommends an amendment to ordinance 2723 by revising the billboard license fees for fiscal year 2023 as set forth in Exhibit 1. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 are adopted by the City of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the prior corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code and ordinance number 2723 until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. This amendment shall be retroactive to July 1, 2022.
Any questions or comments about this ordinance?
None.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2783 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2784 for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Angela, was that you? Was that you?
Yeah. Ordinance number 2784, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to transfer from the General Fund and appropriate funds for the Government Office Building Number 1 and Number 2 project in the General Capital Project Fund. Whereas due to staffing increases, the City of Salisbury desires to expand into additional office space to conduct daily operations. Whereas the City of Salisbury has entered into a lease agreement with the property owner of 115 South Division Street, previously known as the Salisbury Fire Headquarters. Whereas the expansion proposal will relocate the mayor's office, downtown visitor center, and city council chamber to 115 South Division Street. Whereas the city has determined an additional appropriation for the Government Office Building Number 1 and Number 2 project is required in the amount of $248,039.24. Whereas funding for the project shall be provided by the transfer of $53,000 from the General Fund plus reallocations from various projects. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of $248,039.24 as provided herein above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the Government Office Building Number 1 and Number 2 project in the amount of $248,039. thousand thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year twenty twenty-three general fund budget being hereby is amended as follows. Increase the revenue account, account number zero one zero 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 four six nine eight one zero in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars. Increase the expense account, account number nine one zero zero one five nine nine one zero nine in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars. Section three, the city of Salisbury's general capital fund project, excuse me, general general capital project fund budget being hereby is amended as follows. This is where I take my deep breath. We are going to increase revenue account nine eight zero zero two four six nine one one oh four three zero three eight by fifty-three thousand dollars. Increase expense account nine eight zero zero two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by fifty-three thousand dollars. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero one eight four six nine three one three four eight zero four one by eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents. Decrease accounts, expense account nine eight one one eight five one three zero two six four eight zero four one by eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents. Increase revenue account nine eight zero one eight four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents. Increase expense account nine eight one one eight five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four three zero zero seven by one hundred forty thousand dollars. Decrease expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four three zero zero seven by one hundred forty thousand dollars. Increase revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by one hundred forty thousand dollars. Increase expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by one hundred forty thousand dollars. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero zero two four six nine one one zero four eight zero one nine by thirty thousand four hundred fifty-six, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents. Decrease expense account nine eight one zero two five one three zero two six four eight zero one nine by thirty thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents. Increase revenue account nine eight zero zero two four six nine one one zero four three zero three eight by thirty thousand dol- thirty thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents. Increase expense account nine eight zero zero two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by thirty thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero one seven four six nine three one three four three zero two nine by twelve thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Decrease expense account nine eight zero one seven five seven seven zero one five four three zero two nine by twelve thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Increase revenue account nine eight zero one seven four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by twelve thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Increase expense account nine eight zero one seven five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by twelve thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four eight zero five nine by one hundred eighty, one hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Decrease expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four eight zero five nine by one hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Increase revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by one hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Increase expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by one hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four eight zero six eight by one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Decrease expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four eight zero six eight by one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Increase revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Increase expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Decrease revenue account nine eight zero two two four six nine three one three four three zero three one by ten thousand dollars. Decrease expense account nine eight one two two five one three zero two six four three zero three one by ten thousand dollars. Increase revenue account nine eight zero two two, nine eight zero zero two four six nine three one three four three zero three eight by ten thousand dollars. Increase expense account nine eight one oh two five one three zero two six four three zero three eight by ten thousand dollars. I think the rest is for spoiler play.
Any questions or comments on that ordinance? Do you need anything reread?
No, we'll not do that to my enemies, I tell you.
Just, just so everyone knows, as state law requires us to, when we move money from accounts that were projects we had savings in or didn't spend everything, or a project didn't happen, we're required to read publicly every account that we're moving it into and why. So that's, that's why we have to do that every time. So all those in favor of approving ordinance number two seven eight four for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two seven eight five.